Good evening, welcome to the regular Ceres City Council meeting of Monday, May 8th, 2017. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And Mayor Viera.
Here. Next, we will have the invocation by Mr. Whitehead, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we just thank you for your grace over our city. We thank you for the beauty that is here. We thank you for all of the great work that happens at these council meetings. We ask right now for wisdom, that's my prayer today, that wisdom would reign in this house over every decision that is made, every discussion. We ask for your grace with us now, in your name we pray, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no presentations this evening. Citizens communication to council on matters not included on the agenda. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Before we get started, just as a reminder, there is a bank of three lights on the top of the podium. The green light is the speaking time. The yellow light will indicate when you have, I believe, a minute left, and then the red light will go when you have reached the five minutes. So I just want to remind people to be cognizant of the light that is on the podium. So with that, I will start with, I have one speaker card, and it's Hiram Zekwado? Is that correct? If you want to come up.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and everybody else here. I know that the city is considering what route to take on the cannabis business. In somewhere along those discussions, there hasn't been much talk about the cannabis testing side. And I'm talking about medical cannabis testing laboratories. My background is, I'm a chemist. I own a lab locally for 20 years, Argon Labs. It's an environmental testing lab. It has nothing to do with cannabis. This is totally, you know, new here, you know, with Proposition 64. So just last week, you know, those interested in testing, like myself, the proposed rules for cannabis testing came out, and so that's what I want to talk about a little bit. Testing is going to be mandated by the state, and it's going to be conducted by certified labs. And labs are going to have to be ISO 17025 certified, which is pretty much a stringent set of rules, you know, very stringent protocols, procedures, on how to test, you know, the field of testing that you're testing. It applies not only to cannabis, but any other testing procedure. The reasons for testing are obvious, you know, to protect the public, product safety, product quality, quality control. I feel that the lab plays a key role here, and it's a neutral party. It doesn't sell, it doesn't grow, it just tells everybody, you know, what the product has, if it's good, if it's bad, if it passed, if it failed. And the state, you know, if you want to sell it, you're going to have to test it. And not only test it, it has to pass. So the state, I have listed here for those of you that got this little sheet, because of my five-minute limitation, you know, I have to be quick on this. There's a set of testings, obviously potency, THC, CBD are the most important ones, residual solvents, pesticides, heavy metals, mycotoxins, bacteria, moisture content, filth and foreign material, which includes, you know, could be hair, feces, you know, packaging material when the product is being processed. The state has indicated that they, for harvest or flower or the plant, they want to go with every batch of 10 pounds. So if you have a grow facility that is producing 120 pounds per month, you're going to have to test at least 12 batches. And if you're in the manufacturing business, the batch is going to depend on the size of your batch. So if you're making little packages of cookies, and you do 5,000, there's an X number that you have to do. You're doing butter, you know, cannabis-induced butter, you know, and depending on the size of the batch, there's a percentage or an X amount of samples that you have to take for that batch. And there are very strict rules that say you have to pass everything in order to release it for retail or to sell. So in essence, a harvest batch, which is flour, must be destroyed if it doesn't pass all the tests, or it can be remediated. So what does it mean by remediated? Well, say you have a batch of flour that did not pass the bacteria test. Okay, so that means that you can probably follow the route of saying, okay, I'm going to make it, instead of selling it to a dispensary as flour, now I have to process it. So I'm going to make it into, say, butter-induced cannabis-induced butter. Now, since you felt the bacteria, by heating it, you're in essence killing the bacteria, and now your product more than likely will pass, and you can salvage some of, you know, your work, of what you were expecting to get, you know, not as flour, but at least you're getting butter out of it. Now, so, like I said, labs are a key role in this entire process, you know, everything has to go through a lab in order to, from there, go to the retail part.
I need you to finish up your comments. You've hit the five-minute mark.
Okay, so I ran out of time. So having said that, you know, I'm here before the council, and I would like to ask the council to consider also adding cannabis testing laboratory licensing in your discussions for possible businesses for the city. I think it'll be a great business, revenue generator too, because there's going to be tough work.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience? I only have the one speaker card. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
Leonard Shepherd, 2841 Fowler Road. I just want to say, we have the best, bar none, in this county, maybe in the state, police and fire. Those guys have been running their behinds off. I know Chief Smith's folks have been, I don't know what the insanity is in Ceres, but it's sure out there. People getting killed and shot just down the street from Councilmember Lane. I mean, it's insane. They're out there just, I don't know what's going on. Maybe it's full moon every once in a while, the weather or whatever. But they've been keeping Chief Smith's folks just running, running, running. And then you turn around, and there's those guys in them big red chunks of iron running all over the place, and they're busy. Saturday, if you, was it evening, I think it was? I'm sure sometime Saturday, I saw this big, huge column of black smoke coming up. Well, it was over at grammar school, I guess, playground. We're just, and I'm not saying that there couldn't be improvements, because there can. And I know, I'm not saying either, that you guys need to say, well, we're going to do whatever we can to save everything, because that's not reasonable either. But start looking at a lot of things that maybe other places of programs can be tweaked, so that we're not, we're not just throwing up our hands, so. And I want to say also, my hat's off to you guys, because you're really trying to do what you have to do to make things work. And that's, that's great, too. Because if you weren't, you ever heard of Bell, California? They're so far and deep into the stuff, and the people that got them there, fortunately, are all in jail, so don't be a bell.
Dave Pratt of Ceres. It looks like we had a great street fair Saturday. It was pretty crowded. Sunday wasn't as crowded. Unfortunately, a bunch of drummers moved over by us, and really, it was hard talking to anybody. But anyways, Wednesday, there's a job fair at the SOS Club for veterans, but it's not only for just veterans, civilians can come too. They just allow the veterans to go through the line, and it's going to be Wednesday from 10 to 3 o'clock. So if you know anybody that's looking for a job, veterans or civilians, I caught one guy going through a dumpster, he said he was looking for work, and so I recommended him go down there and see what he could come up with, so see how that works.
My name's Lee Brant, and I live on Haley Aloha. I just want to let you know, I am on the committee for the centennial celebration for 2018. We finally got our logo. We have a Facebook page, and we were out at the street fair, and I agree with Mr. Pratt about the drummers, but that's a whole nother subject. But I just wanted to let everybody know that, you know, that we're out there, and we're starting to take some ideas. We have some really good ideas about how to celebrate, you know, how we're going to celebrate, you know, whether we do it monthly, you know, bimonthly, or one big to-do, you know. So join our Facebook page and chime in. If you've got any ideas on your own, let us know. Most of you already know how to get a hold of me if you need anything, okay? So that's all I wanted to say.
What's the Facebook page?
Lee, what's the Facebook page?
Bob, I have no idea. Ask Toby, he knows what it is. No, something centennial.
Yeah, Ceres Centennial Celebration. Yeah, thank you, Renee.
Yeah, see, okay.
Thank you.
Boston member.
Okay.
My name is Mark Gray. I'm from Modesto. In the last two years, I've been a compliance officer for a medical marijuana establishment in Nevada, and I want to applaud you guys for what you're doing, trying to open the door in this situation. What this gentleman was talking about as far as testing goes, it's imperative that you guys at least crack the door open and look into a testing, medical testing of cannabis oil as well as flour, because the closest one is in Oakland, which is Steep Hill Laboratories, thank you. And as a compliance officer, my job was to coordinate between the state of Nevada's laws and the medical marijuana establishment, but also had to be in on what's called the ILAC Committee. The ILAC Committee is the independent laboratory advisory commission for the state of Nevada to be sure that every gram of marijuana that comes through is pure and tested properly. It's the most important thing, because you can have mycotoxins in your medicine, next thing you know, 20 years down the line, your lungs are eaten up, you can't breathe any longer. I found out about the power of cannabis through my own time with chemotherapy, 11 months, and it was absolutely a lifesaver. Did it heal me? No. Did it make my nausea go away? Absolutely. Did it make my weight loss down to 132 pounds increase? Absolutely. No matter what we're told, there is power in this product, and there's power in this flower, God-given product and God-given power. And I'd just say that if you can consider what this man has to say, and crack the door a little more about testing in the city, it would be a huge benefit for the patients, and that's all I wanted to say to him. But what you're doing is, you're on the right track, and I applaud you for what you're doing. Thanks a lot.
Mike Miller, Ceres Firefighters, Local 3636. I just want to, again, put it out there that we have Fire Ops 101 coming this Saturday. And we've talked to everybody here, as well as Measure H Group. It's a great opportunity to really see what we're doing out there and how we work with our neighbors. It's going to be held at the Modesto Regional Fire Training Center. Be a great opportunity for people to connect with other leaders in the government throughout the county. So if you have any questions about it, please feel free to reach out to myself or Joe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, we will bring it back to the council and move on. Next appointment, the boards and the commissions, we have none. Conflict of interest declaration, is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the seven consent calendar items? One new business item or the public hearing item? Okay, hearing none, we will move to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. This time, is there anyone on the council that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion? All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion?
Six.
Number six, okay. All right, with that, I will bring it back to the council for direction on the remaining items. Move to adopt items 1, 2, 3 with the revised minutes, 4, 5, and 7.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, Mr. Shepherd, if you wanted to come up. Item number six, final adoption of ordinance number 2017-1040, amending Chapter 9.30 of the Ceres Municipal Code relating to fireworks sales and Section 15.10.150 of the Ceres Municipal Code relating to safe and sane fireworks sales.
I missed the part back there at the meeting this was brought up at, is what's the big change? Is it hours of sale, or?
We changed the municipal code so that illegal fireworks are now a violation of our municipal code, allowing us to cite people for possession of illegal fireworks for up to $1,000 per incident. That is the primary change.
Oh, okay, that, I was trying to remember that, and my memory is not that good sometimes. And so I would like to see you do it to about 10 grand, but that's, you know, that might be a little bit of deterrent. Maybe 10 grand and 90 days in the slammer or something, I don't know. I don't, you guys can't put people in jail on a municipal code violation, can you?
You can't. You can't. And this actually adds the administrative provision. We still have the criminal side, which is up to $1,000 in six months.
Oh, so you can go from both?
Yes.
Oh, good. Hear that, Chief Smith? Now you can get them on both sides. Good, thank you.
Dave, did you have some questions?
Basically, it was the same question. It shows, it says "and," but it means the same thing, right?
There's two sections that were changed. The first section, Chapter 9, was the illegal component. Section or Chapter 15, we took the existing language on our safe and sane and moved it and updated the language so that it's consistent with state law currently, so cleaned it up as we were doing it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for direction on this item. Move to adopt item number six.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business this evening. New business, we have one item. Item number eight, resolution number 2017-038, awarding the construction contract for the Ceres downtown renovation project to George Reed, Inc., authorizing a 9% contingency, approving the budget amendment, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract. Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor, council. We're excited tonight to finally bring this downtown renovation project before council for their comment tonight. We're pleased that George Reed was the lowest bidder for this project. They have got a great track record here in our community on multiple projects. They've done a very good job for us in the past. However, we did only get one bid on this project. We were hoping for more than one, so it was a single-source bid on this project, which allows us to look at either rebidding this project or accepting this tonight. If we do rebid this project, after talking with multiple contractors throughout the community, they will most likely not be able to rebid this till maybe fall, winter of this next year, because of their busy schedule. It would put the project off about almost a year if we decide to rebid this. However, we are confident that we got good numbers on this bid, and we had a really good design incorporated into this bid. So tonight, we're looking for your direction on how you want to pursue this contract, whether to approve it or to rebid it at a later date.
Okay. Are there any questions of staff? I'll open it up to the public.
So you had, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
That's all right.
You think this is a fair price?
I do think it's a fair price, yes.
And so if the, again, some of this work that's being detailed is, in cold weather, really can't be done?
Right now, the four different contractors we talked to said, with all their construction crews are booked through probably the fall, so they wouldn't even tackle a bid until next fall, maybe winter, to look at this project if we chose to rebid this, which would put us into a construction zone the next spring.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll open it up for the audience, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. One comment that I would say is, although we only had one bidder, and it was a little bit higher than the engineer's estimate, my concern with putting it off is based upon what I'm seeing in my business. There's a lot more activity going on construction-wise, and there's no guarantee that we'll end up with a lower price. We could end up with a higher price, given the level of the activity out there. So I know that this is an important project for the city, and I think even when I was at the street fair this weekend, I saw there were some nice comments at the general plan booth that the group was running, and one of the comments was, at least at the time when I was there, the leading indicator was, you know, a nice new downtown look was what a lot of people were asking for. So my opinion would be that I think we should stay the course with this and move forward with George Reed.
Perfect. I move to approve resolution number 2017-038.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Councilmember Lane. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move to a public hearing. This was continued from our April 24, 2007 meeting, excuse me, 17 meeting. That is, public hearing to consider zoning ordinance text amendment, ZOTA 17-04, ordinance number 2017-1039, and a development agreement for the case manufacturing project located at 4111 Brewmaster Drive. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. You might notice our new mics. We've had some mic challenges in the last couple of meetings, so, so far, so good. They are working well. So, thank you. We did continue this item. We were able to have the planning commission discuss this item on last Monday, May 1st, and so this evening, we'll cover where we left off with the last conversation with the council, which is back in March, what the planning commission recommended, and then cover the proposed actions this evening. So just a simple overview, the existing cannabis regulations. As you'll mention, you know, you'll hear me interchangeably use cannabis or marijuana. Those two phrases are, I mean, the same thing as we get through this. We will talk about the pilot project and what that means, and what we need to do in order to permit this process, which would be a zoning code text amendment, the ordinance development agreement, and then seek any public comment. The public hearing is in, look for council direction. So cannabis in California. So we spoke about this two times in workshops here in this meeting room. Medical marijuana has been around in California, permitted, well, not really permitted, but legalized for over 20 years. Unfortunately, no permitting process has ever been developed for it. So it's lived quietly in a very quasi-permitted state in California, which has led to a lot of confusions. Fortunately, in 2015, finally put a structure in place, which is referred to as the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, MCRSA. And those three bills form the framework for now what the permitting process and what's referred to as a license that would be issued from the state. The other piece that has come into play now, that in some people's mind complicates things, is Proposition 64, or the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, AUMA, that was passed by the voters in November of last year. So those two laws provide the framework for cannabis in California. So as we've spoken before, we have the two paths that this council has given us direction to move forward on. One was dealing with the personal recreational use under Prop 64 in private residence. Staff is working on that. We expect to bring that back for council consideration later this summer. The other piece was a limited medical cannabis operation, which is the topic of our conversation this evening. So with where we're at in the overall licensing process from the state, the target date is January 1st, 2018, for the issuance of state licenses, both on the medical cannabis side as well as on the recreational side of things. So just recently, Friday, the April 28th, the state issued, from the Department of Marijuana Control and Department of Food and Agriculture, the licensing guidelines. So that is a state rulemaking process that now has been issued for public review. So there's a 45-day public comment period, and this would provide the licensing guidelines that would be issued from the state. Important for our conversation this evening, because we need to be consistent with those licensing guidelines as they come down from the state. So as those go through the review process, we're obviously very cognizant of what's going on there, ensuring that everything in the DA is consistent with those rules as they're being drafted by the state. The overall process, once this piece is done, it'll go back with any comments, they'll revise that, and they'll issue final rulings and final licenses by the end of this calendar year. For what we're speaking about this evening, the specific business that we're talking about, the case manufacturing project, a single business to operate a medical cannabis operation includes cultivation, small cultivation and manufacturing of medical cannabis. The owner, Mike Reynolds, is here in the building this evening. The structure of his businesses is the LLC, which is JMR Management Group, and then case manufacturing, which is a cooperative that does the actual cannabis business portion of the operation. The proposed site that we're speaking in this evening is 4111 Brewmaster Drive, near the intersection of Service Road between Morgan and Crow's Landing. So in order to move forward with this, our current zoning code, we prohibit all medical activities under a very broad definition of dispensaries. So in order to move forward with this, we have to make a change to our zoning ordinance, that's Chapter 18, as there's two provisions in Chapter 18 that need to be modified in order to allow us to move forward. The planning commission reviewed this and did recommend unanimously for the council to move forward with the zoning ordinance text amendment. It's also in your package. You can see a relatively simple description of the ordinance to allow this specific use at this specific location, consistent with the ordinance and the development agreement as presented. Again, in order to be consistent overall with our general plan, our zoning ordinance, this is the first piece of the overall conversation, to be consistent language throughout. Again, the zoning, the ZODA, zoning ordinance text amendment, doesn't allow any medical cannabis uses. It just creates the framework so that we can move forward with the ordinance, and the ultimate permitting is really under the development agreement, as long as the entity also has a state license. So as you may remember, back under the conversation, what's nice about the MCRSA under the medical cannabis, it is a dual license requirement. The state will not issue a license to any applicant. will not issue a license to any applicant unless they already have a local license. So that's a key difference with M R, M C R S A versus A U M A, the Adult Use of Marijuana Act. That does not require the local agency to issue a license. Two separate processes. This one, from a local agency perspective, gives us much more local control, which is obviously what we've always been looking for as part of our legislative package, to ensure that we try to keep local controls for as much as possible. Key difference between the two laws. So that's the first piece. The second piece is the ordinance. So ordinance two thousand seventeen ten thirty-nine, this ordinance creates the business pilot program we're, we're speaking of this evening, which allows us to amend that prohibition that we had put in place under ordinance two thousand fifteen, or two thousand, yeah, two thousand fifteen ten thirty-five, two years ago, after the passage of the M C R S A. We put that ordinance in place as another strengthening mechanism to allow us to control all activities related to cannabis. So this ordinance would revise that previous ordinance to allow us a very narrow framework in order to issue the development agreement to allow this business to operate in our city. So again, the pilot program would allow one medical cannabis business through the development agreement. Again, this is the preferred option, as it is a narrow opportunity for us to see how this business operates, to see what the true impacts are, to ensure that everything is captured, monitored, audited, and done, done right before we get into other considerations of other operations that may be desirable for the community to consider in the future. So the last piece is the development agreement, which is the key tool, we'll say, in terms of allowing this business to operate in our city. So a couple of key points of the development agreement. One, it authorizes the indoor cultivation and manufacturing of medical cannabis pursuant to California law. Three-year term is what we were proposing as the agreement is drafted. The key provisions are the, the fee structure, which is for months, one through twelve, fifty thousand dollars per month. Then year two, seventy-five thousand dollars per month, and year three, a hundred thousand dollars per month. And again, the nature of that is related to the impacts on services that this business would have within the city. So the overall, and again, if you have questions on this, and I'll pause for just a second if there's any questions with where we're at, we'll note that in front of you this evening is the, a red line, or a blue line version. There was one change that we made today that we recognized, the updating the document on pay, of the D A on page, apologies, page ten, the top of page ten, changed the way the language was written on the deposit. So Mr. Reynolds has given us a twenty thousand dollar deposit to date, a thirty thousand deposit, thirty, additional thirty thousand dollar deposit will be made in the next two days in order to get us up to the fifty thousand dollars, which is in essence, the first month to cover the costs associated with getting this point. So the language is updated to reflect that commitment and arrangement that we have. So in essence, the month one would be credited with the expenses that we've already incurred that he would be paying for. So that's the only change, and some slight formatting to the document. So I wanted to point that out for your consideration. You have both a blue lined copy and a clean copy there in front of you of what was included in the package.
I do have one question for you.
Sure.
You know, on page four, first paragraph, how does the city notify the state if they don't want an adult use medical marijuana act license? Because, you know, it states that we don't give them a license for the adult use, but the state does.
They have to demonstrate that they have a license. They actually have to show the license.
But the city, the city, if I read it right, the city doesn't have to issue them a license.
But we, that is actually a requirement. The business permit is the license.
Okay.
That is required.
So that's, that was my question. So if we don't give them a business permit...
They cannot get a state license.
So we don't have to, but it says they have to, we have to notify the state.
No, that is not the case with, with medical cannabis. So under M C R S A, we are not required to notify the state because the state won't issue a license without demonstration that they already have one.
But what I'm saying is, on here, it says it's up to the local agency to tell the state, do not issue a license.
That's under A U M A, under Prop sixty-four.
Right, that's what I'm asking. So how do we notify the state not to issue a license?
That's what we'll have to do, a process where we notify them that we will not allow under Prop sixty-four.
Okay.
Two separate issues. Okay. Any other questions? We're pausing there. So again, just kind of overall picture, the benefits of the cultivation manufacturing and the D A as we've destructured, as we've structured it, as the comments you've heard over the past couple of months, the ease of access for medical supply for patients, does not promote personal consumption in the city, reduce law enforcement responsibilities. I think that's interfering. Maybe. Thanks, Brent. Reduced law enforcement responsibilities. City manages land use and operation of legal businesses rather than illegal activity. It allows us to have permitting authority to limit the number of grows, locations, and restrictions, and also gives us the, the restrictions to, yeah, this little feedback, my apologies, inspections and audits. And so the overall, big picture, a couple of the concerns that are still out there, based on where we're at in the overall timeframe. The state law is still in place, but they are working through the process of issuing these licenses, which is still a process in, it'll likely take several months to work itself out. And there are a number of conversations at the state level regarding how these two laws will work independently, or if they will possibly be merged or get closer together in the... So with that, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Toby, with the deletion of the prohibition of cannabis dispensaries, and now we have the, the D A allows it, is there absolutely no loophole where someone could come into town and do a storefront dispensary? Absolutely, there's no loophole?
Yeah, it's not, yeah, we, our ordinance prohibits it.
Okay.
Except for this narrow exception.
It would be illegal, and like we did in another town, we would shut it down.
Okay. I did look at the D A, and we are going to do yearly reviews.
Correct.
But if some of the neighbors are having concerns, that, I don't know what their concerns can be, but if they're having concerns, is there something in the D A that would allow dialogue with Mr. Reynolds prior to that year?
Yeah, there's several different locations where there's what we'll call the right language, meet and confer. If we have issues that are coming up, that we can get with them and try to work out those issues before they get to. We don't have to wait a year.
Okay.
Address those as they come up.
And then on the ordinance itself, the first whereas on page three, it was the planning commission's recommendation that the money be put into law enforcement. So we need to, we need to discuss that if we want it just to go strictly into the general fund. Personally, I would like to see a revenue account, you know, a line item that would show it, so at all times, we can actually see how much money we've received, just like we did with the money we received for the K nine sale.
It'll be a separate line item, a revenue line item, I believe, right, Suzanne? I mean, it wouldn't be, every revenue that we have has a separate line item, so this would be a separate line item. We'd be able to track individually.
Okay, so with the ordinance stating, under that whereas, that it's a recommendation of the planning commission, that it be used for law enforcement services? Does that need to be in there if the council says we don't want it to go strictly for that?
It's up to the council. That's a recommendation. It doesn't, it being in there doesn't tie your hands. If you wanted to clarify that and remove that, that is up to the council.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, with this, at this time, I will open up the public hearing. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item, please come forth.
There we go. Most cities are concerned about two things. One, the product leaving the facility and getting intermingled in with the city and the people in the city, which is diversion. I think the police chief is aware of that activity. Seed to sale is a word that's used in the state in both Nevada and California. And what seed to sale means is that every plant that is being grown has to be issued a barcode. That barcode is tracked from the time that, that plant is entered into the system, all the way through to the point of where it's harvested and sold. That gives you the safety net, knowing that whatever is grown in this facility will go through the whole process and will be under basically supervision of the city, you guys or your law enforcement agency, and they can track every plant. So every couple of months, in, at least in Nevada, the state would come in, they would do a walk around to be sure that the number of plants being grown equal to the number of barcodes being issued. That's the safety net that you guys have, to be sure that the product is not diverted back into society. We don't want that, obviously. Secondly, the biggest challenge that most neighbors have, at least it was the case in Nevada, is the odor control. Odor control is, is, basically, you walk around a building, if you can smell it, that's a problem. There are, there are equipments that you can purchase that controls the odor, the charcoal filters that release, that resolves that problem. I don't think that that odor is going to be a problem with Mr. David's facility. He, I've, I met him several years ago at, through the Modesto meetings we would have. I spoke with the city, county planners and everything else. As far as your discussion of dispensaries goes, what you guys allow is what the city's going to have and what the people on the outside of the city can do. If you don't allow it, no one can come in. They could, I guess, just come in and open up a, a building, but then you have chief of police on board to say, no, that's not what's going on, and your issues are kicked out from there. But as far as it goes, seed to sale takes care of diversion in this project, and it should eliminate a lot of your fears about how the product is handled. I know that in two thousand and ten, the state of California issued the guidelines for the security of non-diversion of, of medical cannabis, and security is the number one thing. All the facilities needed to have twenty-four hour video access to the police department, where they continually see what's going on. To get from one room to another, you had to have a card lock system where each employee had a card that they had to swipe to get into the next room. Some people were allowed in those rooms, some people were not allowed in those rooms. But there are plenty of things that you guys could interact into your new law. This, it secures the product, because at the end of the day, you don't want kids getting it unless the children have been vetted by a doctor. Also, on top of my affiliation with the state of Nevada and compliance, I also owned a medical cannabis recommendation clinic in Modesto for three years. I spent more time on the phone with the health department, excuse me, the Board of, Board of Medicine in the state of California than I did actually with the patients that we had. One thing I know, that everybody that's involved with medical cannabis wants to be legal. They want to do all they can do to be legal. If you guys would set up guidelines where they can be legal, I think it was a long way. With a trust between the city, law enforcement, and patients, it kind of a three-way street kind of thing. I think if you can do that, you'll be way ahead of the game. But the main thing that I would be concerned with is diversion into the neighborhoods, and you have that handled by the seed to sale tracking, which the state of California will require each medical cannabis or recreational cannabis provider to have a seed to sale program in place. Seed to sale program in place in Nevada was through a group called M J Freeway. They provided the, the seed to sale tracking, and you'll have the same issue here, because that's what the state of California will require. So it's kind of, I guess what I'm trying to say is it gives you assurances that it's hard for the product to be diverted back into the city, into teenage kids on a street corner, if you have that seed to sale process in place. You can track every plant, literally. And as this gentleman said, once you do the testing and the medical testing as far as the quality of the product, if it fails, that product has to be destroyed. The state of Nevada would come out to our cultivation center and watch us destroy the program and sign off on the fact that it was, that every gram of that product is tracked, and every gram, you know, right where it is at any time of day or night. Law enforcement could come in, say, I want to see your plant count on your computer program, and I want to do a physical plant count on your grow, to be sure that everything's in compliance. Compliance is the biggest issue in this whole program. If you've got a solid compliance world, you've got a solid execution of the state law. In your case, it'll be the solid execution of city law. And what this gentleman was talking about, as far as you, the state issuing licenses, if you guys don't allow dispensaries, that's fine. You can't go to state and get a dispensary license from the state because it's not allowed in your city. That's the main thing.
Can I have you wrap up your comments? You've got to the five minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to go.
Okay, no problem.
I'm done. I just want to say that there are
Okay.
situations in place to protect you guys, so it doesn't get out of control. And I know that's your main concern. So thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak on this item?
Give Mr. Reynolds and his company a chance to make Series a big name in medical marijuana. I think it's a good idea, and if it's as close watched as it seems to be, I think it's going to be good. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mike Milligan, Sirius Firefighters, Local thirty-six thirty-six. I just want to commend the council on the design of the ordinance that specifies the, the fees that, the fees that are collected going to public safety. I think there's going to be an impact, not only just in Series, but throughout the county with the passing of the law statewide. We're going to see more instances of EMS calls, vehicle accidents attributed to the use of marijuana. But in the city, if we do start allowing areas and warehouses, we need to make sure that our personnel, there's money set aside, so that our personnel can get the proper training to do the inspections that are required for these businesses, and our personnel have the, the tools and the training to mitigate the incidents that might occur at these incidents. So I commend you for having that portion in there, and I hope some, a portion of that money is reserved for fire. Thank you.
Couple of quick things. One actually deals with fire. Since this facility is less than a mile from fire station three, my question would be, due to all the electric and everything else, would there be a chance that station three would be opened and use the fees, some of the fees that we're getting from this, to keep station three open, since it would have an impact on the facility? That's one thing. The other thing is my concern, reading through this, and I'll just read it, says the city council may from time to time determine whether to allow additional medical cannabis businesses as part of the medical cannabis business pilot program. Excuse me. And that's a concern, because I think this is a great project. But I'll be honest, I see, once that money starts coming in, I see the city liking the money and saying, oh, why don't we open up a medical dispensary? Why don't we have another medical facility? So I guess that would be my concern, is to get some kind of an assurance, at least from, for now, until this has gone through the three-year process. Just to kind of get some assurance that this isn't going to happen in a year from now, we're going to open up a dispensary or something else. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for more questions, discussion, or direction.
You know, I personally would like to thank Mr. Reynolds. You know, we've had several conversations, and, you know, having the opportunity to have Mr. Reynolds get with our city manager and the city staff, and to put this together as fast as you guys have. And I think this truly is going to be a blueprint for not just our city, but for other cities. And there's a lot of need for this, especially if you can go get it somewhere locally in regards to the medical side of it. But I just wanted to say, that's a great job, everybody that had a hand in this. Terrific. And it is general fund money, and it should go to general fund stuff like public safety. So we'll have conversations about that, I'm sure, later.
Vice Mayor Klein?
You know, I'd like to make a few comments. You know, as we look at what we're about to undertake, we're basically blazing the way for a whole new business, and how the people look at this type of drug. I'd like to thank city staff, the city manager, the city attorney, and Mr. Reynolds, you know, for bringing this back home, you know, where you're from, because there's many places you could have chose. And, and I'd like to thank you for first reaching out to the city of Series and the council to, to help move this thing forward. You know, I'd also like to thank the planning commission. You know, I, I read, I read their comments, I read their questions, and, you know, it sort of opened my eyes on a bunch of things. It answered some questions that they asked city staff, and, and I didn't have to move forward with it. So, you know, I, I'd like to reach out and thank them also. You know, I'm not a fan with, I, I read this thing, I'm not a fan of, of the recital K of the development agreement, of the service impact fee, as defined to be the use of law enforcement. Because over eighty percent of our budget right now, general fund budget, is, is public safety. That I do believe that at least eighty percent, if not more of this, will be used for public safety, because that is, that's the majority of our budget. But I just hate to turn it around and, and and take it and earmark it specifically for public safety when they get 80% of our total budget anyway. So I feel that they're gonna wind up with at least 80% of these, you know, service impact fees. So, you know, I'm not a big fan of leaving that in there. The other thing is, in section 1, 1.9 on the amended agreement, you know, I can give latitude with minor amendments to the city manager, but before the amendments are made, I do believe it's a responsibility of this council to understand the amendments, and I would like, I would like added upon notification of the council of these amendments. You know, so I think that, you know, as a council, we're blazing the saddle, and for any amendment to be made, I do want to give the city manager and city staff some latitude, but before the amendments are in place, I would like them to at least notify the city council, because it is a responsibility of the city council. Also, in section 2.4, the minor changes amendments to the permit use, you know, I believe with this type of amendment, it should come back to the council for approval. Since we've turned around and made exceptions and we blazing the place for, you know, I believe it's four different licenses that we agreed that we'd look into. Before any other kind of licenses are added to it, like transportation, and some of them that were proposed, I do believe that it needs to come back to the council. So the council knows what licenses are gonna be added and what we're gonna do as far as, as far as changing some of those agreements. Because when we sit down there and we lighten this thing out since day one, you know, we got to choose between, I think, 17 different license agreements, and we chose, I think, four or five. And just to turn around and blanketly just add them as you go without prior council approval, I think, I think that we're doing a disservice, and we should be notified and at least have some discussion on that.
Okay. Any issue with that, Mr. Wells?
The direction that you gave us was three specific licenses: distribution, cultivation, and manufacturing. So we know for sure, based on the current licensing, that we need the cultivation and the manufacturing. The distribution, as the language is written currently, is somewhat questionable, and we're kind of waiting to see how that framework completely rolls out, as to whether it's absolutely necessary for Mr. Reynolds to operate the business as he's proposing currently. We may not need it, but the language is included so that we can react relatively quickly. If he's required by the state license to have that distribution license, we want to be able to move quickly to not impact his overall business operation, which is why section 2.4 was drafted, to allow us that flexibility to move forward. Obviously, you know, any of those changes, I'm going to be notifying the council. It's, you know, drafted so that we can move quickly and adjust to state laws as quickly as possible.
And any of the other 17 that we did not include would all come back to the council.
Correct. We just put those two specific ones as the ones that would likely be triggered as a potential. We really don't see the need, based on the current draft of licenses, for the transporter component for the operation of his business. The distribution piece is still a little bit murky in terms of how it will work with our licensing as we've currently set it up.
Okay. Any other questions? Look for direction.
I would agree with Vice Mayor Klein that we should be notified if the licensing does change, because like he said, we were given the option of all these different licenses, and we chose the ones that we wanted to have in the city. And I also still do not want the whereas on page three of the ordinance, that it will be used for law enforcement services. I think we need to discuss that as a budget item.
I agree.
You know, and think of what Mr. Wells said, you know, the council meets every two weeks, and I could ask Mr. Reynolds, if it had to come back to the council for approval of a distributor or a transportation fee, I mean transporter license, would the two weeks hurt the, and Mr. Reynolds is pointing out, no, that coming back to the council, you know, within a two-week period, just to adopt those things so we know it's not gonna affect his, you know, distribution or what his path is. So, you know, I'd say, since we're blazing sandals, and, you know, when this thing gets up and rolling, there's might be a few of us that aren't gonna be here anymore, but I still think it's a responsibility of the council, since we were starting blazing this.
Okay. Move to approve.
Second.
With the changes they have requested?
We need to clarify a few things.
Okay, here we go. Well, you need clarification?
Yeah. Well, one, it's, remember, it's an ordinance, so recognize, the first reading was already, we waived that, but, so, a couple of things to clarify. One, the resolution, let's start there, the resolution and the whereas is just stating the fact of what the planning commission did.
Okay.
So it, it-
Has no bearing.
There's no action item that says that we will augment it. So the resolution does not require, as it's written today, the use of the funds expressly for public safety. It's just documenting that the planning commission recommended that.
But it's in the ordinance, correct?
It's just the whereas of the ordinance.
Okay.
Right. So if you'd like to clarify, we can add a, another statement in the ordinance saying we don't want to, we don't want to dictate. So that's, that's one thing we could add to that ordinance resolution, if that would be more comfortable, more powerful.
I would be more comfortable with that.
City attorney, would you have recommended language there? I would simply, I would think that we would just add, or Doug, if you've got anything there on the ordinance?
So that's separate, that's separate than the zoning ordinance amendment, correct?
Correct. Two separate actions. So on the ordinance, I would just-
Can we take the zoning ordinance first and then go to the second one?
Good.
So if we can ask Councilmember DeRosa to pull his, pull your motion.
I make a motion, zoning ordinance text amendment 704, 1704.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
And Mayor Vera?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
If I could, Deputy City Attorney Doug White, I would probably just take out, remove the last sentence of number K. It's unnecessary for the agreement. It's a statement of fact of what the planning commission recommended, but if you're afraid that that will cause confusion, I would just move for adoption with the elimination of the last sentence of-
Oh, of the whereas?
Well, the first sentence, which is, "On May 1st, 2017, planning commission in duly notice and conducted public hearing satisfied municipal code by considering options, application for this agreement. That remains a correct and true statement." I think what you're trying to get out is the second part, which is intent language that the planning commission recommended that the city council adopt the agreement, with the recommendation that infrastructure and service impact be used for law enforcement services. So we would strike that second sentence, and you'd still satisfy our municipal code requirements of stating that we've satisfied that requirement. So again, just a recommendation to strike the second sentence, K.
Okay.
So that would clear of your discussion items, the ordinance would then be clean, and we don't have, those other topics wouldn't be in the ordinance, those are DA. So you could move forward on the ordinance, although the ordinance is enacting the DA, so we probably need to clarify that as well. Right, Tom? So, that's on the resolution. So then to the-
On the ordinance?
Correct.
Okay.
The ordinance language, but the ordinance enacts the DA, so we need to discuss those other items of the DA. So the, there's a couple different ways, Doug or Tom, you can clarify. We could either have the requirement of the city manager approval with council ratification. It should be one way of doing it, where I have the authority to make the approval, but it comes to council for ratification. Or you just change the language so it says city council. Is that correct? That'd be the two options.
You could do it either way.
Or a third one, you could say, "At the end of the discussion about you approving minor amendments, which shall be provided to the city council before execution."
That under section?
Be a third way.
Your second 1.9?
Yes. At the end of the third, after the language in the parentheses, you could have a comma, "which shall be provided to the city council before execution." Be a third way.
So that would be the section 1.9, and then the section 2.4, again, those same three options, I believe, would apply.
Right.
So you give me the authorization to move forward, subject to, I just notify you, kind of the three levels, right? Give me the authorization to move forward, but I notify you before I move forward. Or I move forward, you ratify, we bring it to council for ratification after the fact. Or three, council action before it's approved. Those are the three things.
I would say council action.
See, and like I say, when I said this, I mean, the first part, you know, with 1.9, I give him latitude, which I understand, and to me, that is, you know, upon notification of the city council. So there's no ratification being made for me. But on 2.4, I think it needs to come before the city council.
Any particular language, Doug or Tom?
Oh, I see, because it's licenses.
2.4, you'd recommend, or, I mean, I think the direction's pretty clear.
We would just take city manager out and replace it with city council. City council may allow, instead of city manager may allow.
Yeah, that's pretty easy change.
So in 2.4, it would be that simple change.
Yeah, just replacing city manager with city council.
Yeah. Are we good with that? Yep. Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2017 1039, with the text amendment as in, whereas the planning commission's recommended the city council adopt the development agreement with the recommendations that development agreement, infrastructure, and service impact fee be used for law enforcement services. I would like to have that scratched. Okay?
Yes.
I would like to add a change to section 1.9 on the amended agreement, that we give the city manager is minor amendment things upon notification of the city council, where it doesn't, it doesn't have to come back to council for approval, but just notification.
Okay.
And in section 2.4, any minor changes will become before the city council for amendments.
Instead of the city manager.
Instead of the city manager.
Second.
Okay, we have- Just real quickly, do we need to have the DA referenced in that? I know that the enacting language is in the ordinance, but just for clarification, do we need to reference the DA?
I thought you referenced it.
Referenced the DA where?
In their motion of approval.
No.
Because it's part of the-
It's part of it.
Part of the motion, just to be very clear, part of the motion would include both the ordinance as it relates to the pilot program, as well as the development agreement, if they're in one ordinance.
Just wanted to make sure we're absolutely clear.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
And Mayor Vera?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. We have no discussion items. Councilmember referrals, is there anyone on the council would like to have an item placed on a future agenda?
Well, I would, I would really like to see the city look at the possibility of a testing facility or licensing for testing.
Okay.
Just need some time.
We totally understand that, but we're the undertaking of this, but I would like to at least have it out there so it is, it is on a future agenda, so we can move forward after this stuff is settled.
Based on current schedule, this little thing called a budget and everything else, and with the residential regulations that we need to draft, they're gonna be pretty onerous.
So within six months, maybe?
I would, I would guess it's at least four months from, you know, where in May, I would guess, as of right now schedule, probably September, before we brought back an item for consideration.
Well, I don't think that any license is gonna be issued before the first of the year, but at least I'd like to have some ball rolling, so we can at least get, you know, if we decide to go down that path, it gives, you know, them time to get some facilities up and going.
Right. We would start with the discussion item and seek further direction from council.
Okay. Okay. Reports, anyone on the council would like to report?
Thank you tonight, Mayor.
I would like to thank city staff for the general planned, how would you say it?
Booth.
Booth, there you go. And, you know, they did get a lot of response, I do believe. They did an excellent job by getting people to vote, to turn around and give their opinions on a board, and, you know, I always want to thank city staff for being out there all weekend and have that undertaking.
Yeah, and along those lines, I would like to comment, one of the things when I was talking to Marjorie about, a comment that a few people had made is, when the new Walmart gets built, a couple of comments were individuals would like to see if the existing Walmart could be sold and developed into a movie theater or something. So I know before Walmart gets too far down that path of trying to sell it, maybe we can reach out and see if we can work with them on something like that.
We've been actively working, trying to get their real estate folks to engage in that conversation with us. Right now, they're, we actually met with their engineer today. We're moving forward on the engineering side of things. We're looking for those contacts we hope to have in the next month or so.
Okay. All right, with that, Ms. Dean?
You don't have to hang there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Just jumped right over you guys.
You know, I think the street fair this weekend was a great success. The crowds, I think, were, on Saturday, probably saw the biggest I've seen in a while. I don't know, Jeff, you were out there too. I think they were pretty good sized on Saturday, weren't they, Jeff? Yeah, so, anyway, it was a success. I didn't hear really too many problems at all. I know we had one incident, I think, is all during the fair. So, anyway, and thank the police officers for being out there, and the fire guys were out there, they had their booth, and I seen everybody really being engaged. So certainly, and, you know, the city staff with the general plan and the water, that was interesting. I think Councilman DeRosa was able to sign up on a porthole this-
I did.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I used a lot of water.
A little bit shocked how much water he uses, but, anyway, so I don't know how much they did out there on that part of it, but, anyway, great fair, good time.
Yeah, I'd like to say a couple of things about the street fair. I see Renee here. I'd like to thank Renee and Shane Parsons, and there's a committee of people that get together. It just doesn't, everybody just don't show up one day and get set up and go. There's a lot of things that have to be done in order for this to be successful. And, you know, from Lisa Montero Moore to Randy Moore, I think Randy was the main guy of the thing. But watching the kids clean up the garbage and help out when everything was said and done and trying to close stuff up, that just shows you what a great community we have. And that Series Street Fair thing is one of these things that will go on next year, I'm sure, and then a year after that, year after that. And it brings in thousands and thousands of people. It brings in some good retail dollars, I'm sure. I know that one of the girls I have in class works at Jack in the Box, and she said it was the busiest day they've had at Jack in the Box in the entire year. And so that's always, that's obviously a good thing. But I'd just like to say thank you to everybody, and obviously the city staff, and seeing our people out there doing their thing. And I use a lot of water. I'll fix it.
All right, with that, we'll start. Ms. Dean, any comments? Tom?
Vice Mayor.
Mr. Wells?
Just to follow up on the street fair, it was just a fantastic two days of, you know, really, from an observation standpoint, the car show was phenomenal, 125 cars. I know that was the largest that we've ever had, and some really, really nice cars. Back to my high school days, drooling over a couple of those cars. But all in all, the city staff, Bertolotti, you know, on and on, the list goes down of folks who, behind the scenes, make this thing work every year, and I just can't thank them enough from, you know, all the names that go on, the Lions Club and everyone else who participates and make this a fantastic event, which really showcases the best of what we are in terms of a community event. You just saw family and kids with face painted and snow cones, and all those activities is just something that's really worth celebrating, and it's something, again, I can't thank everybody involved enough for what a great event that was. A couple of little items, things coming up, the measure L, our half-cent sales tax on a county one basis, there's a citizens committee that's being formed. It was required as part of that measure. It's on the city's website, it's on Stan Cog's website. If you're interested in serving on that committee as a citizen, please sign up, fill out the application by the end of this month, 5/31, submit that to Stan Cog, that would make in those selections, and they hope to have that in place and appointed in July as their goal. So if anybody's interested, if you have questions, you can see any of, myself or Councilmember Klein is, Vice Mayor Klein is on Stan Cog, so he loves to talk about Stan Cog, so he'd love to answer your questions on that. Before you leave, council, on the diocer down the hall is the black binders, which is the draft budget for your consideration for our meeting next week, would be our budget workshop, first time we've done it this particular way. We'll, I know Suzanne is concerned of the status of the budget as it is right now. It's not ready for approval, this is a draft. There are still things that we're working on, and likely by Monday's presentation, we'll have, you know, a number of changes as we work through this week. But it is in your hands, so you can start looking through the overall issues. We'll conduct a full workshop next Monday, but wanted to get that in your hands to start that review process. And it's, as you can see, it's a pretty daunting pack- to start that review process, and it's, as you can see, it's a pretty daunting package, just a lot of information in there. Again, the focus really is on the general, general fund, but the other information is in there as well. So, we'll look forward to that workshop next week. As Mr. Brant mentioned, the Centennial Committee has selected a logo. If you were at the street fair, you saw that logo. We are working with our next meeting will be on the sixteenth, next Tuesday, so, again, the community is welcome to attend that, and I hope to be bringing in an item, a discussion item to the council, just to give an update of how the committee is, is going, what they're thinking, the thought process in the next month or so. I would, I would suspect June or early July after we get the budget approved, would be the likely arrangement for that. And I think, yeah, covers it. Thank you.
Okay. Just one comment I would make about the, the, the street fair and the parade. I don't know if it's, if it's feasible or not, but, well, with such a large turnout of cars, would maybe help with, with the, the parade attendance if it would be a possibility that the cars could be in the parade and then park themselves.
Yeah.
Some of them are, but, but not all of them, though, right?
They choose.
Oh, they choose?
They choose.
Okay. Okay. With that, Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmember, for your comments regarding the general plan update. I, I know that many of you did our dot exercise. We actually had a hundred and thirty-one people participate in that exercise, which kind of listed their, their priorities. The number two generator was the downtown. The folks were really positive about the downtown, also signed up a bunch of folks for our distribution list, so, all in all, it was a great time. Did want to mention that on May eighteenth, Agro Business Luncheon is going to be held at Diamond Bar Arena. I think that Diane has sent out information about that.
Okay. Daryl?
Thank you, Mayor.